I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight and say hello to everybody who's listening on our recorded broadcast. We are not live anymore. We'll remind everyone, since we are not being televised, you need to please wait to be recognized by name before you speak so that everyone listening to the recording will know who's talking. That being said, I'll real briefly go over our agenda for this evening. First, we have the consent agenda, which is the minutes from the April 28 meeting. Then we have a site plan design review for Discount Tire on Coronado Drive. Then we'll move on to other business and we'll be finished. That being said, first we'll start with the consent agenda, the minutes from April 28. Any discussion and/or motions? Mr. Wallace?
Do we accept the minutes?
Have a motion? Mr. Trowson?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Move on to the site plan design review for Discount Tire. Mr. Hawley, it looks like you're going to present tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for a site plan and design review to construct an approximately 7,840 square foot building to be used for vehicle repair, limited service. The property is located, as you can see on the overhead, at 1305 Northeast Coronado, and that is the north side of Coronado Drive, and it's east of the Arby's Restaurant out there. It's approximately 1.02 acres, and the zoning is GB, General Business, with a restricted overlay, and that is the Adams Dairy Landing restricted overlay. In Area 2, this is the only site that allowed for an automotive use. By way of a little bit of history, and I won't go through all of it, it's on page three of nine if you would like to see it all, but a couple of important things. The PUD final plan application for Adams Dairy Landing, Area 2, which this is in, was approved by the Planning Commission in March of 2009. And an amended final plat for Area 2 was considered by the Planning Commission in July of 2013 and then approved by the council later in July of 2013. Let's go to the site plan real quick. You can see on the site plan that this particular property will have two access points, one on the west and the other on the east side. The access on the west is a shared drive with Arby's, and then that goes to the rear of the site, which accesses the rest of the properties to the west. It also has an access on the east side. That access originally in the PUD was intended to be a right-in, right-out only, and that was, I'm sorry, it wasn't right-in, right-out. It was intended to be a single exit access, as opposed to an in-and-out access. And that was a result of the parking. At the time of the PUD final plan, they had angled parking, and because of the angle, the direction of the parking, it didn't make sense to have them be able to enter into that access. They've since changed that configuration of the parking to 90-degree, so now it does make sense for them to have both in and out access from that particular access point. Staff didn't really consider that any kind of a major change from the standpoint of traffic. It really didn't impact traffic in any way. And as far as the angle of the parking, it certainly didn't affect the numbers, so that's what they proposed. They are providing 30 parking spaces for this particular site, and based on the UDC, 18 would be required. Little bit hard to see on this, but you'll notice there is not sidewalk on the north side of Coronado or in front of this property, and that's because with the Adams Dairy Landing Plan, the sidewalk is located on the south side of the street rather than the north. So they are not required to put in sidewalk. Screening for the mechanical and utilities will be considered during the building permit process. We don't have all the information at this particular point, but code requires that they do that screening. They did show the trash enclosure. It's proposed to be located along Northeast Coronado Drive, just west of the east driveway. The materials and whatnot do match the building. The open space, the PUD final plan did allow for a reduction in the open space from 40% to 33%, and this particular site provides roughly 18,000 square feet or 41% of the site, but when added into the total for Area 2, it covers the open space area that it was supposed to cover. The applicant provided an alternative compliance landscape plan for the original PUD final plan, and on page six of nine, you can see the numbers for landscaping. In this particular case, the landscaping exceeds by one plant unit what is required. The alternative landscape plan really had to do with what RED installs along the rest of Area 2, so that's where that comes in. This particular site meets the requirement. I know the architect is here tonight, and I think I'll let him talk a little bit more, or I think I'll let him talk about the architecture of the building itself. On pages seven and eight of nine, you'll see the architectural design for commercial projects, and we have some comments in there. Basically, to summarize, it does meet the tenant criteria handbook in the materials chosen, the variety of materials, and they've also put some of the Mediterranean feel into that building, which was the theme for Adams Dairy Landing. One thing of note is the automotive service doors. They are facing Northeast Coronado. There was really not a way to configure this site that they didn't do that. So what the applicant has done is they've used a neutral tan color for the perimeter, and then the doors themselves will be glass, so that reduces the impact of those doors. But I'll let them go into that further. Staff does recommend approval. There are five conditions noted on page nine of nine, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for staff on this?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawley. Would the applicant like to make their presentation, please?
Good evening. Jeff McMahon with RED Development, 7500 College Boulevard in Overland Park, Kansas. I just wanted to make a quick introduction and say a few things. We're very pleased to have Discount Tire here with us tonight and to be a part of our project. We've been courting there for a long time and excited to have them here on this application. So there's a couple gentlemen here tonight representing Discount Tire. First is Rob Wise. He's the Regional Vice President of Discount Tire and handles a lot of their stores throughout Kansas, Nebraska, and Missouri, and Iowa. Also with him is Gary Leeds. Gary is with Cow Valley Engineering, who's going to make most of the technical presentation. And so I'll turn it over to Rob and Gary, and I'll make myself available if there's any questions when they're done with their presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. First time I've ever been in front of a group like this, so go easy on me. I'm just kidding. Just kind of introduce you a little bit to Discount Tire. I don't know what you know about us. I'll start with myself. I've been with the company 30 years. When you start with Discount Tire, we all start changing tires in the back room. So we're all, we kind of grow up in the business. So everybody that's in a store today, changing tires or selling tires or in an executive position, our company has worked their way up through our company. We don't hire people in from outside. We groom and develop our own. So that's one of the things that we have taken. We've been doing this for over 50 years as a company. We have 882 stores nationwide. We're the largest tire retailer in the United States, but yet we're a family-owned business. It still is a family-owned business. In fact, next week, the founder will be out here looking at new sites in the Kansas City area. So he sees every site, he approves every site. It's still a family-owned business, which is pretty interesting, even though we're 882 stores large. We've been in business 54 years. We started in Ann Arbor, Michigan, for anybody that is from the Michigan area. We started there in 1960 with our very first store, and then grew from there. Some of the facts about our company, all we do is sell tires and wheels. I think you already know that. It's very limited. We don't do automotive repair work. All we do is sell the best tires at the cheapest prices, and we offer the most choices, and we really, really focus in on customer service. We have right now two, one store in Liberty, Missouri, and we have a store in Gladstone, and they're off to a fantastic start. The reception with the community has been just overwhelming, really, to be honest with you. We didn't expect it to be like this, but it's been a really good ride, and we're looking forward to getting a store open here so we can continue that growth and opportunity within the city. And we do hire local, too. The 882 stores that we have open today, what we do is when we come into a new market, they assign a vice president like myself, and then they ask people who want to transfer from all over the country into a new area, because the opportunity, again, to move up and manage your own store is the ultimate goal. So we had over 60 to 70 people move within the first six to eight months coming out to this part of the country to help us open stores. And then we started hiring local help because we want to, you know, create that opportunity for local people also. We do have, if you've ever been on our website, DiscountTire.com, tells the story about Discount Tire very well. We were the first company and tire retailer to make available customers to be able to go online and actually do research, set an appointment, and buy tires online, and then go to our store and have them installed. So that's something that we started a long time ago. We've been at it quite a while. And we have Discount Tire Direct, which is our mail order business, also online, and it's in magazines. You may have seen some of their ads if you've ever looked in car magazines. Like I said, we sell all the major brand tires, you know, Goodyear, Michelin, Bridgestone, Dunlop, Continental, you name it, we carry it at the best prices. And one thing we can't leave out, and I don't know if you've, well, you probably have never seen our thank you commercial, but in 1974, we launched a commercial that is now still in the Guinness Book of World Records. And what it was, we didn't know really it was going to be this attachment to it, but we kept running it year after year, and it was a picture of a little old lady rolling a tire up in front of one of our stores, and she picks it up and throws it into the glass, and says, "If ever you're not satisfied with one of our tires, please feel free to bring it back." And then on the ground, the glass spells out, "Thank you, Discount Tire Company." It's a 10-second commercial that's been running for forever, for whatever that means to you. And we're involved in a lot of philanthropy. We do, we get, we're already involved with Rose Brooks here in Missouri. We're a part of that. We're actually supporting the pet shelter that they have, that they started two years ago. So we're involved in local philanthropy already. We, when we get into a community, we want to get involved and want to start giving back to the community. We have, we take care of our employees with scholarships. We have great healthcare benefits. There's just all the things that big companies offer, but we really try to provide it at a low cost to our employees. We are, we're in motorsports. Some of you may know us from NASCAR. We have a Nationwide car. Brad Kowzlawski, I don't know, some people like him, some people don't, if you're not a NASCAR fan, but he's a very good driver, and he's doing really well with us. And we kind of do the same thing in the NASCAR series. We actually groom drivers from the start and let them get their time in the seat with us, and then when they get to the point where they can drive a cup car, they leave us. But we're kind of the development team for NASCAR, for Penske Automotive right now. And a lot of corporate giving and a lot of stuff like that that you really don't need to know about, but that's just on the other side of things. But that's really about it. I just wanted to wrap up and just let you know, we are really excited to grow in this city. Our guys are looking forward to getting stores open so they can have that opportunity to manage our store and take care of customers. We do take our job serious. We're just a tire company, but we say that, you know, we're really in the people business, and we really take that serious. We work very hard to make sure customers are safe and happy when they leave our location. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Hi, Gary Leeds, Cow Valley Engineering, 14700 West 114th Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas. I'd like to thank city staff for working with us on the plan. Between RED and the city staff, I think we've really come up with a really nice-looking Again, just to reiterate some of what already been said, you know, we took this from a one-directional loop through the site, and by reorienting the parking, we were able to go to 90-degree parking because we were able to manipulate the shape of the building more than what was originally proposed in the preliminary development plan for that area, which was just a nice, long rectangular box to hold some space. By going with a little modified building shape, we were able to increase the available space for the parking and go with a 90-degree, kind of improve the accessibility for everybody involved. One of the key items to note is that Discount Tire does not store any of their product outdoors. None of the used tires are stored outside. All of those are contained within the building, within a concrete room. The new tires are all inside on a storage rack in the back of the building. The dumpster enclosure, we always get asked, then why do you have two? Discount Tire is a firm believer in recycling, so there is a trash dumpster and a recycling dumpster in each one of their stores. The architectural, I'm the civil engineer, the architect couldn't be here tonight. The architectural features of the building between RED and the city, the architect has been able to really mimic the materials and the colors and the feel of the existing development out there. I've got this materials board that I guess we can pass around. Save the color. Kind of give you a feel for the architecture on sheet A4. Again, the glass in the overhead doors with the bottom of the, the bottom of each of the doors being in the color-matching metal, along with the band at the top to help kind of blend this in and make it look more like a storefront along the entire face of the building rather than garage doors. We're in agreement with all of the stipulations, and I guess we're here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Got a couple. On the parking, is there, do you guys ever keep cars overnight or anything like that?
It's the preference not to. They don't want, for a variety of reasons. Number one, most communities don't want you to leave the cars parked out front. Number two, it becomes a liability issue of who's responsible for any damage that could be done to a car overnight. So that's generally their preference, is they don't want people, the model that they've built, you're in and you're out, so it's not like you need to drop your car off and leave it for two or three hours and come back. You're literally in the store for, Rob helped me out, half hour, 45 minutes tops. I was talking to the, one of the vice presidents from the corporate office, who was telling me that, you know, you can go online and preorder your tires, pay for them online. They'll tell you when they're in the store and give you an appointment time to show up, and you can literally be in and out of the store in under 15 minutes.
Okay. And on the garage doors, are they closed most of the time?
Yes.
Even in the, like, the middle of the summer and that sort of thing?
I would assume so. The garage doors, the overhead doors?
Yes.
Typically not.
Are they open?
Typically, they stay open.
They stay open?
Yes.
Okay. So the design features are great when it's closed, but when they're open, it still looks like garage doors.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back up here for any discussion. If there is no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman Bill?
Mr. Trowson?
I would like to make a motion that we approve case number SPD R-4-14-4378 and the five conditions recommended by staff.
I have a motion.
Mr. Jim, I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That site plan design review has been approved. Thank you. Welcome to town. We look forward to seeing you. Okay, we'll bring that back now. Other business? Mr. Allen, I think you wanted to visit with us for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, at the last Planning Commission meeting, a few of us were absent, myself included, along with Planning Commissioner Abbott and our principal planner, Mike Peterman. We are working on putting together more complete summaries of the conference, kind of a tradition we've had last several years, thanks to Councilman Culpepper, kind of pulling together a lot of the information overload that we get, or four or five days, and putting it, kind of distilling it for everybody, a little bit easier to read. Even so, mine was still, mine's still five pages long, so we will, you can see the page one of it here, but we will get this emailed out here this week, and Mr. Peterman is also working on his summary, and I'll defer now to Planning Commissioner Abbott if he wanted to kind of give any initial comments before I go into my kind of detailed spiel here.
Well, it was a good, it was a good opportunity to learn a lot of interesting things as far as the planning commissioner can do. Being an environmental engineer, of course, I kind of went towards more sustainability issues and green infrastructure and this type of thing, which I think I learned quite a bit. But it was a very good conference during our planning commissioners' day, which was Monday, got to meet a lot of different people from around the United States. In fact, these weren't planning commissioners, but I got to talk to people from Australia and talk about what kind of problems they had. But met a couple of, actually, other engineers like myself that were planning commissioners, and we had some interesting conversations. But it was, it was very good.
Speak closer.
I'm sorry. But anyway, it was a very, very good conference, and I hope some of you other new folks could go participate in our future and throw up with your time if you're available to do it.
And again, appreciate the opportunity to attend. It's been great to have a planning commissioner, at least one, attend every year now for the last several years. We're one of the few cities that's able to accommodate that. There is always, of course, I believe it's Overland Park, who sends their entire planning commission, so I don't know if Councilman Culpepper wants to carry that forward to the rest of the council for budget considerations, but I don't think they have 11 planning commissioners, though. But again, they're the only one really in the area that sends even one. You know, they send the entire planning commission, but it's great to see us participate in a more kind of holistic endeavor. And again, there are about 5,000 total in attendance in Atlanta, which is about average, it sounds like lately. Next year is in Seattle. I think maybe there will be more competition from planning commission to attend at that point, but again, there were a lot of great sessions. I won't go through every, all this page by page. There are a lot of links, of course, a lot of information online. That's a lot of what's been kind of pushed out there. First day, we were there, again, arrived Friday, and the conference starts Saturday and goes all the way through kind of midday Wednesday, so it's really a full five days in attendance. And again, longest days were 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So a lot of walking, as I think Commissioner Abbott can attest to. We actually selected one of the closer hotels, and even so, it was, we kind of logged it .9 miles from our hotel to the actual sessions, and then about half a mile, just to tour around the building. It's quite spread out, if anybody's been to Atlanta Conference Center, but I guess it was built for the Olympics, so all the different indoor venues, so a lot of separate buildings kind of spread out. So it's a little bit more large and spacious than some other conference centers that you are familiar with, but I won't go into the great details here, but first day, there's a lot on complete streets. We have the livable streets policy, looking at integrating that into the new comprehensive plan. Just a lot of good information in terms of kind of confirming what Blue Springs and some of the communities in the Kansas City area have already been doing, so there's a lot of good links to some good information. There was a, there were two sessions usually at the end of certain days for fun. They call them fast and funny, or fast, funny, and furious presentations, where you have six minutes, and it's rapid-fire, different presenters present information in a more humorous manner, as funny as planners can be, which is not always the case. But one of the speakers did give a really interesting one. He was talking about livable streets, and he wanted to compare that as to whether our streets actually are livable or are they killable. So I thought it was interesting, livable versus killable streets. So he went into a whole, whole deal about how a lot of our 20th century design standards lend themselves, you know, towards not being accommodating for pedestrians, cyclists and such, and now we're kind of turning that back to be more accommodating of all, all methods of transportation. A lot of talk, AARP was very prominent in their presence there, not because of getting closer to that type of participation, but the fact that they're really trying to get involved with kind of creating what they call, like here, complete, instead of complete streets, complete communities. And their Public Policy Institute is one that I would highly recommend, and again, you'll get this emailed to you, but they talk about aging in place. That's kind of a new thing that we'll be talking about, I'm sure, as our demographics trend a little bit older. That's going to be shown in the, right up front in all the demographic information, the new comp plan, and just trying to look at how can we help folks move from each kind of age cohort or demographic, yet still stay in Blue Springs? So not once the kids have moved out, then the parents move out, or once you retire, you leave the community. You would talk about kids kind of leaving the community at some point, but, you know, we're trying to see if we can keep parents and retirees from doing the same. So what they put together, which is really interesting, is a livability index. I don't know if everybody's familiar with Walk Score, kind of walkability index. You can even look at it on most real estate sites. They have a link to a Walk Score, you know, how walkable is a, is a property that you're looking at. And they're looking at doing something more comprehensively for different census blocks, to different neighborhoods throughout every community in the entire US, and they're going to be rolling that out here this summer, so provided link to that, which is really interesting, just to show, again, how livable a place is, kind of cradle-to-grave type approach. A lot of information went to different sessions on comprehensive plan, just to see where we rate, and again, I think we're on track with our comprehensive plan and being right up there with what a lot of other communities are. with what a lot of other communities are promoting and pursuing. One of the things that was really interesting, again, it's hard to read this, but one of the overall best practices that they kept coming back to is strengthening linkages. So not just having the comprehensive plan be a standalone document, which again, I don't think we have in, in theory, have really been keeping it a separate plan, but just trying to be more intentional about connecting the comprehensive plan, you know, to the UDC, which is what we're working on, but also to other policies. I could talk about livable streets policy. So making all those connections to the comprehensive plan and keeping it more in the forefront of our minds. And again, a good question that was thrown out was to think honestly about your plan. If you weren't a planner or a planning commissioner, would you want to read it? So that's kind of one thing we're looking at with the format that you'll see with our comprehensive plan as well. Always interesting to hear Paul Zucker is kind of a nationally-known, I guess, management guru in the planning field. He always talks about the good, the bad, and the ugly of planning departments. He shares experiences, and none of them from Blue Springs, about how not to do things and some of the best practices he does see around the nation. I thought this was interesting that, I've yet to confirm this, but he stated or claims that St. Cloud, Minnesota, allotts twenty-five percent of every application fee to what they call a planning fund. And they use that for updating their plans and studies. So instead of you making a capital improvement project or something, they would actually just start kind of their own pool of funds with every application to do their own. And the most interesting part is that that's controlled wholly by the planning commission. So anyway, don't think about leaving and fleeing to St. Cloud or thinking of making changes here. I don't know if that's even legislatively allowed in Missouri. But it's just interesting that, I don't know if it's something that's been around for a while, he said. But again, that's one way that they try to retain funds for keeping planning going in their community. And that kind of included in, in here, some of the things that we are doing in Blue Springs that he did reference, which is always good to see, again, some of the good things that he sees, we're already doing. Innovative community engagement tools was also interesting. A lot of communities gave, participated in one session, talking about how, you know, like with our comprehensive plan project, you kind of how they looked at getting more engagement out of the community and just some interesting different options that they considered. And then again, just development approval. As economic development was an interesting one, getting what you want from zoning, a lot of different kind of mix of things. And I think we split things up, as Commissioner Abbott was saying, you kind of went to different types of sessions. So you see that in our write-ups as well. So nothing overwhelming that's saying that, boy, we should do this immediately and, and change what we're doing and, and such. But it's a lot of, a lot of confirmation of where we're headed with our new comprehensive plan and with the new UDC, just from a lot of the sessions that we saw there. So a lot of links, a lot of information for you to look at on your own time. But again, I, one, to leave it with that livability index from AARP, I think that's one thing that's really going to be kind of a hot item for the next year or so, if not beyond, just looking at that aging in place concept. So it's something, again, we're considering and referencing in the comp plan, but I think something you'll see, kind of talk about livable streets and those types of smart growth, those types of buzzwords and buzz phrases. I think that aging in place, accommodating seniors and such is going to be more commonplace as we move forward. That probably took longer than the actual item for the agenda, but a lot to do in, in five days, trying to sum it up in just five pages and a couple minutes here, so. Your, your questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions?
If I could jump in.
Absolutely. Chairman Culpepper? Or, yeah, Council, Councilman Culpepper, I'm sorry.
I think it's wonderful if someone could just, just a quick.
Maybe just a quick, few-minute review of what y'all covered to the council, because it's, it's important, I believe, for the council to see that the information is being received, is being used, and, you know, all that education is being applied. And I think that's important because budgets are really tight. And so I think it's nice to let, let the council know that you want to continue having that fund and having those funds available for these conferences in the future.
Thank you.
George?
I'd be happy to do so, Mr. Chairman. And certainly, we were already discussing it today, you know, how to best get this information out beyond just the planning commission, may include it in plan notes. Didn't want to overwhelm everybody all at once, but we'll maybe kind of slowly leak it out to everybody. But I did want to leave everyone with one new term I learned. You know, we talk about roundabouts and such and we, you know, it's like, people don't like hearing that word, what is that, it's scary type of thing. Circular intersection, that's what they're called now. That's the politically correct term, circular intersection. I thought, okay, that's interesting. I've not heard that kind of spin put onto what a roundabout is. So anyway, something to think about.
I had a question, Scott. You know, we had that planning, planning session last week and a lady was there that brought up the subject of health.
Yes.
Were, were they there on this bill and they talked about that?
Oh, no. Thank you for bringing that up, yes. Commissioner Wallace, yeah, with the presentation we had from Vario at the last planning commissioners' workshop or training session, I guess, was last Tuesday. And yes, talking about public health, that was another, I'm glad you brought that up, another large track of information. And I'm hoping that Mr. Peterman can provide a good summary as well, because I know he attended a good deal of those, those sessions as well. So just how planning interacts and, you know, connects with public health. And just, again, enhancing the value of what we all do here, at least every other Monday, in terms of how it connects with the community at large.
Okay. Thank you. Just to kind of tie into this, you said every other Monday. Remind everyone, next, our next meeting would have fallen on Memorial Day, so we will be meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Correct.
And do we have any agenda items for that evening other than the comprehensive plan review?
No, we do not, but that will be certainly a large enough item, I believe.
I agree with that.
Yes. So we, so we'll have a review of the draft comprehensive plan. And we will hope to get that to you probably first thing next week for review. So you should have, you know, good eight to ten days to review it.
And we'd like everyone to go through that so that you can come prepared at the meeting with comments, questions, to be ready to, to go forward with that.
Yes, thank you. And again, there, your peers here on the steering committee as well as some councilmen on the steering committee, so they will also hopefully be present on the twenty-eighth to, to give some background and information as well.
And I just wanted to add that as you're looking through the comprehensive plan, if this thing's supposed to go on.
It's at the top, Jim.
It's at the top.
Just hit the on button. You can take it out of there.
Well, anyway, while you're looking, can you hear now? While you're, while you're looking at the comprehensive plan, not only the content, but pay attention to format as well. If you see formatting issues in there that you think, hey, this might be presented in a more understandable way or user-friendly way, those kind of things, they're important to us. Those are kind of things that we are also looking at. So, so don't feel as though you just have to, have to focus on content. We're definitely interested in your comments on, on formatting and, and our whole objective with the comprehensive plan and when we started this was that the layperson could pick this up and that it would be an interesting document and that they would want to delve into it. So keep that in mind, please.
Okay. Yeah, it is a quite different document appearance-wise than the previous document, so I hope everybody will really enjoy looking at it. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add this evening before? I would like to remind everyone to come downtown next Saturday, this Saturday, I'm sorry. We have multiple events going on, on Saturday. The farmer's market, the relocated farmer's market will be open at, behind the Baptist Church. And on this side, on the east side of Fifteenth Street, the Downtown Alive will be having their Corks in Canvas Art Show and Wine Event. And on the other side of Fifteenth Street, the Historical Society will be having their Arts and Antiques Show and Sale. So please come downtown and visit all of us and see what we've got going on down here. Anyway, anyone else have anything? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace, move to adjourn, second.
Second.
Mr. Barlata, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.